Good evening. We welcome you here to our regular council meeting of West Valley City. We call our meeting to order and note that we have a full core president, all council members in attendance. We will begin our meeting tonight with this opening ceremony and I'm understanding as Councilman Beulah, you have the opening ceremony. We'll turn it on to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. We've had a couple of weeks go by, just as the schedule worked out, where we did not have council meetings. So we have minutes from our last two meetings, from July 15th and July 22nd, that we need to present to the council and with their okay, get those approved. So to the council on the minutes, any action you want to take?
Mayor, move for approval of the July 15th and July 22nd regular council meeting minutes.
Councilman Vincent makes a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Lang, there's a second. We have that motion properly before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place the motion for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of July 15th and July 22nd, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Do we have a sign up list? We are now at our public comment portion. But I don't know, we signed the list, so we're getting that right now.
Sorry about that, Mayor. Just wanted to get that right too.
Yeah.
This public hearing is coming.
Oh, yes. If you are here to give input on the budget, there will be a separate list a little bit later in our council meeting, time to speak, and we will allow public input there. So if your comments are on the budget, we'd ask you to hold it till then, and we will give you an opportunity. So if these individuals were here to speak on the budget, when we get to that point, we'll call for that input. You can do it then. But we have signed up Justin Merkley. And so is your comment on the budget?
It could probably go both ways.
If you have something other than the budget, we'd invite you to do it now, because the comments later will be limited to the budget. So we remind you that you have five minutes.
Of course, I'm Justin Merkley. I'm a resident of West Valley. I had ideas and I've been talking, going through the White Pages, talking to every kind of person I know about, maybe starting up a rodeo ground in West Valley. I think I left a message with Karen, and I never got a call back. So I don't know if I'm going about the right way of doing this. That's because, I mean, a lot of the people I talked to said if I wanted to budget it, that, you know, they parks and recreations, they said they could change zoning and this, that. But I live over off of 2800 South, and I, as I've noticed being there for two years, because I lived up on 35th, a couple blocks away, as all the agricultural property is kind of diminishing with building houses. And right now, RMR, I guess, are building more warehouses and stuff like that. And I was, I mean, when I was a kid, younger, Magna, they used to have rodeo grounds, something close. And when I talked to other people in the city, they told me they used to hold days of 47th, the E Center. What I'm trying to do is get maybe the city to help out with, because I have a lot of residents in West Valley who are all gun hope for any kind of help they can do, but not, you know, not so much money wise, but is labor, hard labor, building a rodeo's ground in West Valley. And that's where my idea was to see if I'm at the right place to talk about that.
Well, the public comment period is to provide input. It's not a discussion.
Okay.
Although there may be some comments later, what I would suggest is maybe we could have you speak with someone afterwards to have a discussion on that with this. And so we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Was that all that you wanted to say on the subject?
Other than it'd be great for children and, you know, get them outdoors and instead of them sitting in houses and causing reckless and stuff like that, playing video games, has become bringing agriculture back into West Valley instead of just making it a bigger, bigger city. As I've been, in the last three months, I've been to rodeos all over Utah, and not, you know, not one in West Valley where I live. And you see Draper, they got a little tiny rodeo's ground, but it's sold out every year. And it just brings a whole community together, and it, you know, brings it, all the city officials and stuff, you see them riding around the back of trucks. So people like me understand, you know, see face to face who you're dealing with, but like I said, it's part of the community, sticks it together, other than churches. And that's where, that's where I wanted to speak about today, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Mel Shoal.
Hi. My name's Mel Shoal. I've lived in West Valley all my life, and I'm 78 years old. And I wanted to know, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to the chief of police. I want to know who's in charge of West Valley. Who's going to clean up the blight? The mayor has no authority. I live on 3575 South, 3200 West, behind the RVs there, next to the big field that Smith owns. My street is gone to crap. Enforcement came out two years ago, and I talked to Mr. Martinez with West Valley Enforcement, and he said he would clean up the street I live on. Nobody's done nothing. One of my neighbors has been there over five years, he's never watered his lawn or cut it. Then my next door neighbors, they chopped up their backyard to plant a garden. Nothing's been done. I work on my yard, my wife killed herself working in the yard. My neighbor across the street, kitty corner from me, she has a fellow come in and take care of her. She's my age. She's a handicap, nimble. But she keeps her main, that nobody on my street, other than one other neighbor, is taking care of their yard. And I want to know who's going to do it? What's going on? I mean, you go down, I grew up in the Chesterfield area. It's terrible down there. We still have family down there. Nobody's cleaning up nothing. Everything's commercial here. Nobody's doing nothing for residential. There are people renting apartments, houses out for apartments. One on 3650 had a sign up on the lawn. I don't know if you people go home that way, but you should have seen the sign that rooms for rent, single family dwelling. The address is 3265 West, 3650 South. You can get up in the morning and go by, there are 10, 12 cars parked there. The other one is at 3304 West, 3540 South. Nobody does nothing about it. Our neighborhood's going to crap. And it just makes me sick. I don't know who's going to do anything. Mr. Martinez, he didn't do nothing. He said he was going to, but he hadn't done a thing. It's the same now as it was two years ago. Somebody got to have authority, the mayor government. Who's going to do something? You guys going to do something, or what? I mean, if you drove down 3650 lately, if you looked at the yards going down 3650, going toward Granger High School, any of you, it's terrible.
Mayor, would you like me to respond, or would you like me to?
Poor guy, he already did.
The way we handle this, without interrupting the individual, you have the right to your five minutes, and then we'll turn to our city manager to offer some comments.
Hey, it's fine. I'll go sit down. Appreciate it.
You actually have some more time, but, okay. The purpose of this is not to get into a debate, but rather for you to have the free expression, and then we will respond. Sometimes that can be done during the meeting, but sometimes it also has to be done after the meeting. And we allow Mr. Powell, our city manager, to make comments, and also the council. So, Mr. Powell, you seem to have a desire to make some comments.
Nope. Just asking, Mayor. I'll reserve my comments for my time.
No, we're done with the public comment. No one else signed up? Was there anyone else who was planning on speaking on the issue? If not, then, yeah, Mr. Powell, we are going to you for any comments you would like to offer.
Okay. Thank you. First, I'd like to just perhaps give a little bit of information to the gentleman who is suggesting or asking for consideration for rodeo use and purpose. I've got to say honestly, that's the first time I've heard that request, or request for that use. However, we do have a process by which recreational uses, park uses, the sorts of uses that would fall in the category of rodeo grounds development are built and are paid for, just for maybe some enlightenment with the audiences out there this evening. The way most of our parks are funded are through park impact fees, and the way park impact fees are developed are as development happens, there's a pot of money that's set aside to do that. Usually, the list to do that is a lot longer than the money that's provided, so naturally, it ends up happening that a lot of times, projects that even get funded on that list take a few years to build, and we work our way down that list to build those. So having said that, there is a process for consideration for those sorts of projects, and I'd be glad to have Mr., was it Mr. Merkley, have some conversation with Mr. Aspel, Parks and Rec Department head. I'd also be glad to have that discussion or be involved in that. I think it's a novel idea, and maybe it is something the city would like to entertain. Like I said, that's the first time I've heard anybody actually coming and making a serious request along that line. Naturally, that would be an expensive and long process. You have to, we, you, we, whoever, would have to find some land for doing that and then developing that land. And that, of course, entails people actually having a demonstrated demand for those services, while also funding to be able to figure it out. But thank you for coming and making that a request and bringing that to our attention. So we'd be glad to set that conversation up. The other comment I would like to make, Mayor, on the code enforcement program generally, and Mr. Shoal's question and request, is that naturally, code enforcement is a question that has a lot of feeling on either side of that. Sometimes we're considered to be too tough, sometimes we're considered to be too lenient. I'll take the address that's on the list there, Mr. Shoal's name, or next, accompany Mr. Shoal's name, and go out personally and take a look at the neighborhood. And I'll check into what cases may have been brought there in the past, what actions may or may not have been brought there in the past. A lot of times, there's also in addition to feelings on either side of the subject as to how those codes should be enforced, some misunderstanding about what can and what cannot be done, or what has been set and what's allowed under our city's ordinances. So I'll be glad to look at those.
I think the street is 3270 West.
3270 West, 3575 South.
Yeah, well, that's the street, and his comments covered all of that streets.
So I'll be glad to take a look at that. I'll get Mr. Morris, go out and take a look myself, and maybe we can have further conversation with Mr. Shoal.
Conclude your comments to the council. Any comments? Councilman Rushton.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank those that have come out tonight, and it seems like the theme of tonight so far is just making improvements to our city, whether it's in our residential neighborhoods or through parks and recreation. I appreciate those that have come to spend their Tuesday evening with us. But I really also want to thank those that a common theme, that same common theme was used last Tuesday, when those of you that watching at home or usually attend our council meetings, were out at Neighborhood Night Out block parties. And I just want to thank all those that participated in Neighborhood Night Out over close to 40 block parties throughout the city, and the ones that I were able to attend were very well done, and the staff that put time into it, police and fire that showed up, was a very important night in our city, that we do that once a year, and meet our neighbors and interact with the city. And so just some of those people that hosted meetings or block parties are here tonight, just wanted to express again the thanks from the city and for myself for the good works that they do in their neighborhoods.
Thank you. Councilman Rushton. With that then, we would note for those here in attendance tonight, we do have items on our agenda that we're going to cover, including the budget. These are items that we have held a previous city council meeting on and discussed before. Everything, almost everything we do, we try and hold two different council meetings. One, we refer to as a study session, where we get a lot of input. And then we have our session here, they are equally weighted, because it's the council, but we wait to take action the second meeting. So we are now going to address the budget. So we have had the budget introduced to us before. We've had information supplied to us, some discussion on that, not a lot. I think on this one, there was just an introduction, I think last time, and said, here is the materials. I think we're planning on doing a little bit more of a form of presentation. I hope the council wanted a little more information. So before we open the public hearing, we're going to turn to, I think Mr. Welch has been designated our finance manager. In fact, on this one, because it's going to be a little bit more, yes, he's moving, we would ask Mr. Welch to come out front, so we can see him a little better and have a little more of a discussion. I think he's getting his presentation up. And there it is. And we discovered that we do have some technical glitches.
Hopefully, those are fixed. Mr. Mayor, this is Jim Welch, the finance director for West Valley City. Before you, you have the tentative budget, which was adopted last June. As you recall, by law, we're expected to adopt the budget before we begin the new fiscal year. In the case where, and this is a tentative budget, because in the case of a tax adjustment, which we have typically done for what's referred to as the judgment levy, the budget is adopted in August, and that's for city, for state code. This public hearing is being held because there have been a number of business entities that have large, have had some appeals to the Board of Adjustments at the county. They have been granted that basically the county said, yes, your property was overvalued, we've been charging you too much taxes, and so therefore, we're going to lower the burden on you, and the small amount of recovery will need to be redistributed amongst all the rest of the property taking entities. And in this case, it's about, I think it was $1.85 on a $168,000 home. So it's not a lot, but in the overall scheme, I think it makes a difference to the city budget. So that's the purpose of this public hearing. The budget you have before you is about, let's see, sorry, I have to find one that I can see. The information that we provide for you is that gives you an idea of the process that we go forward, and I think most of this is for the public. As you've been very involved, city council and city management in putting this budget together, we put the budget together with prescribed responsibilities, both by the state, by local statute, and then also we conform to government finance officer standards, which require that we meet certain levels of transparency and accuracy. We've received an award over the last 20 years that we meet those standards, and that's something that the city can be quite proud of, and we believe that we'll also obtain that award this year, as we diligently strive to meet those standards. Give you an idea of the process of putting the budget together, this usually starts in about December, when we begin reviewing the revenues for the city. And when we get those revenues put together, then we'll have a strategic planning retreat, wherein the city council considers the objectives for the next year, given the resources that are provided. Those, the direction we get from the city council is then brought back through the city manager, through the department heads, who look at the existing resources, make a proposed budget, and then that is again brought to the city council for adoption. That is adopted in June. If there isn't, not going to be a public hearing to adjust the tax rate, or if we adopt the, if there is going to be an adjustment, usually based on the judgment levy, or if there's going to be a change in the rate to increase revenues above what they were in the previous year, that would be adopted in August. Some of the things that we take into account when we put together the revenue projections are the general condition of the environment. We look at reports that come from banks, from economists. We look at what's going on here locally. We speak with our business license folks. We speak with our developers. And we gather as much information we can so that we're fully informed on what we expect the next year. We do projections over time. We do statistical analysis and correlation to see if there's things that will impact our revenues as we go forward. And with that information, we put together the best estimate that we have of revenues for the upcoming year. Our budget, by nature, is an estimate of what we expect our expenses to be and what we expect our revenues to be. It's not to the dollar amount, although the amount that you authorize as a city council is limited. Throughout the year, there are opportunities that if there's more revenue that comes in or expenses that come in that are expected, that weren't expected in the original budget, we have the vehicle where we can go back and modify that budget. The expenditure projections are driven by the strategic planning process of the city council, the direction of the staff, as we get that information from the city council. We take into account service levels, our certain costs of services. Some of those are quite volatile, some are not. Things like utilities, fuel costs. We've noticed that fuel costs have been kind of challenging over the last couple of years, and the city takes efforts to try and make sure that they can meet those needs. Over the years, I think you'll remember that we've moved to a significant number of our vehicles that are hybrid vehicles, and that's increased our ability to provide services at at least a similar cost to what we've had in previous years in spite of the rise in gas prices. We also have wages and insurance for employees. A city is operated by the employees, and government operates because of the services that those employees provide. Costs tend to go up each year, as you're only aware, in your personal homes, there's things like insurance, there's things like wages. Utilities continue to go up also, so we take into account those. And then also the aging infrastructure with our buildings and with our fleet. So there's a lot of things that we take into account. Gratefully, we have a lot of wonderful department heads who have a good handle on each of these items, and we consolidate the information and build the expenditure budget out of that process. This next slide gives you, I hope you can read that. I know that you're quite familiar with the numbers anyway. This is our comparison of our old 14 versus our old 15 budget. Actually, we're coming in at approximately the same amount that we had the previous year, right at about $69 million in the general fund. For those that aren't aware, the general fund is the main operating account of the city. That's where our public services, our police, our fire, our code enforcement, our public works, parks and rec, and administrative functions are paid for. We have several other funds that are adopted with this budget that include things like stormwater sanitation, and some of our enterprise funds, including the golf courses. The total budget to be adopted this year is right around $100 million. We spend most of our time focusing on the general fund, just because that's the, that's the fund that contains most of the operational expenses, and the other ones are service funds. By comparison, the revenue versus expenditures here, you can see how much we receive from revenues. Most of it comes from taxes. Our property taxes make up about 39% of our revenue. About another 31% comes from our sales tax. That mix has changed a little bit over the years, as we've seen our sales tax shrink in the last couple of years, but starting to come back. The economy's been good, and we hope that that will continue. We're expecting a relatively flat with slight growth, the growth this next year. There won't be a home run, but at least it will be probably a single or a double, so we're looking really positively towards that. The expenditure budget, most of our budget, 44% of it actually goes to public safety, which is one of the core services of a municipality. The rest of the budget goes to providing debt service to the infrastructure that we provided. That would be a city hall, that would be golf courses, that would be police, the public safety building, things like that, cultural center. And then the rest of the budget breaks down by percentage, that you can take a look at those slides to kind of see where the rest of the expenditures proceed. And that concludes my presentation. If you have questions about specifics, be happy to address those.
Thank you. To the council then, for questions, or Councilman Rushton?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Will you just go through and, I'm assuming we met all of this, and you talked about meeting all the state regulations as far as disclosure and noticing of this meeting, as far as the whole budget process. Will you just go through some of the other steps that we do as far as transparency of the budget and public disclosure of this and the rest of the process?
Certainly. The, much of the information that's compiled in the background is largely done within, within each of the departments. There are a couple of public meetings that are held. One is the strategic planning retreat, which was held each year. It's a public notice meeting, which the city council plans for their future. They look at what's happened in the past and try and formulate a way to go forward with the resources that are available. The actual posting of the budget goes onto our website. We post our tentative budget, we post our proposed budget before it's adopted in April. I mean, usually adopted in May, excuse me. Yes, sir.
And clarify that that's on our website. At work, they get that.
Absolutely.
Specifically.
Be happy to.
Available to all.
Yep. You can find a copy of our budget. This budget is under the council minutes and this agenda for this evening. In, as soon as it is adopted, we will post it under the, there's a budget section in the finance section of the city website. I think it's actually called budget. Under that section, you'll also find a few other interesting tools. One of those is a property tax calculator that allows you to put in the value of your home and see how much approximately your property tax would be, and how your property taxes are distributed through all the other taxing entities that serve West Valley City. A lot of people are probably not aware of how that works, but there are a number of entities like Sala County, Sala School District, Mosquito Bateman District, Granger Hunter Improvement District. We have that all broken down on our website, so that you can go in there, take a look at what your potential property tax total bill is, and then how much of the West Valley City property tax goes to certain services. So hopefully, that helps people understand our budget and understand where the money goes.
Thank you. Second question. You had some economic data out there, just generally, nationally, as well as the city. Does that include, I guess, the recent economic numbers, or is this a few weeks ago? Because I know we had kind of economic retraction over the first half of the year, and then I guess more of a rapid economic growth the second part of the year, I guess.
These numbers were updated about three weeks ago, so some of them have been changed. I know the rate of inflation has been adjusted since these numbers came out. Unemployment is correct. The top ones you'll notice, there's kind of a small arrow, kind of gives you the trend of where things are going. Population estimates within the city are done by our planners and our economic development staff. It has been trending up. Right now, we're expecting about 134,000, 34,000 residents in the city. That represents about a 0.8% growth over last year. So the city has been growing. Unemployment has actually been down. Locally, we're doing much better than nationally. Our unemployment rate of 3.8% is down 0.9% over where it was last year, which is still significantly below the 6% that's been at the national rate. Sales tax collections right now are about 5% above where we were for previous years, so we're seeing that as a positive note. We're expecting that to continue. A lot of the information that we get from our economists, which I visit with frequently, as a matter of fact, I've met with some today, indicate that we've got some kind of choppy water going forward. They don't expect any retractions. They do expect consistent growth over the next year, but it's not going to be the double-digit growth we've seen in the last year or two.
And so based off of this, with personal income being 2.3%, but inflation being up as well 2.1%, the layman's term would be that on average, our city residents are better off this year by 0.2%.
You can read that.
Would be helpful. We can interpret that. The last thing that I want to talk about is that, you know, when I got my tax notice, and it has the judgment levy on it, which has been kind of a standard practice of the city to correct the errors or the judgments from the past year, and it says 100%. And so can you explain why, I guess, it, you know, is 100% increase over last year?
Serving. If you look on your property tax notice, which I did not put one of those slides in, I have looked at that, and the reason it shows 100% is because, it's kind of hard to explain without the graphic, but if you look at your property tax notice, the judgment levy shows up as a single line item. It's not associated with the regular property tax revenue for the city. It's not associated with the regular property tax revenue for the city because there's no reference from the previous year. It's a one-time item. It shows 100% increase, even though it's very, very small. It's 0.0, was it 0.06%, 006.
And thank you. No further questions?
Thank you. Any further comments you'd like to make?
Appreciate the opportunity to work on the budget, put it together for the city.
And the budget, as we reiterate again, is available to all citizens to review out on our website, as Mr. Welch has explained. And certainly, as you have questions or comments, you're welcome to contact the city. All the information is available to our residents. What we do, we do with the intent of continuing the programs essentially that we've done in the past. Almost all of the budget, and I don't have a percentage, but it's got to be 98% plus is for things that have already been approved and in place for, you know, a number of times. As you saw, the public safety portion of our budget is very large. We continue to run that. That's not a new program. We do have to put new funds in on occasion, but essentially, we continue the operations of the city. There are no, not aware of any major new things. There are obviously, we might buy a new piece of equipment or some minor things, but I think mostly our budget is what might be classified as continuing the operations that we're currently doing, even though there are increases in costs there, as Mr. Welch mentioned, on fuel and different things. Although fuel took a nice turn, went down just a little bit. Hope it lasts for a while. Thank you very much. Now that we have had that presentation, we will go to the public hearing portion of our agenda. And I now declare that the public hearing portion of our meeting on the 2014-2015 budget is now open. If there are any citizens, are there citizens here who want to speak to this? This is the opportunity you would have to do so. Oh, I thought maybe there would be at least one. Okay. It is a quiet year on the budget. So seeing no individuals in the public who want to make comments on the budget, then I will declare the public hearing closed. The public hearing is closed. We will now turn to the council for their consideration or action or comment on the budget. Councilman Vincent?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 14-130, adopting the final budget.
We have the motion properly before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Jeweler makes a second. The motion to approve the West Valley City budget for our fiscal year that we're currently in, the final approval and final budget, is now properly before us. Any discussion or further comments on the budget? Seeing none, then we will place the vote for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015, of the West Valley City budget, the final budget, to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously with all voting in favor. So we now have an officially approved budget for our fiscal year. Now, we do sometimes open that budget. In fact, based upon rulings from the state auditor's office, we actually do have to open our budget back up as we have different changes in contracts and minor changes. These are usually very small, but they are necessary to do during the year, and I think we're doing that, we're scheduling it quarterly. We now go on to our resolutions. We have two of those. 14-131 is the first to award a contract to Top Job for our 2014 crack seal project. This relates to our roads and is the way we try and preserve those roads over time as they crack. It's a lot easier to do that and cheaper by extending the life by sealing those than by waiting for more damage to occur and then having to replace it completely. Very effective, used by most cities and the state to extend the life of our roads. So we now place that resolution before the council. Any discussion or comments? And remind you that we have discussed these before. This is fairly routine, this particular one. Seeing none, then we'll say, do we have a motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Norfeld.
I move for approval of Resolution 14-131.
We have a motion to approve it. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Rushton has a second. The motion is properly before our council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving this contract? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Resolution 14-131, a contract for the 2014 crack seal project is approved and will be dealt with over the course of the year. Thank you. It was unanimous vote. We now go to Resolution 14-132 to approve the purchase of a custom fabricated park, pavilion, and trellis. This is at a park we are currently developing, the Glen Weaver Memorial Park up in the Vista subdivision. And because of the unique nature of that park, it has a big elevation separating that. It's got to be, what, 12 feet? It's kind of interesting, some of the things that we will do there. And for those of you that don't know, this is a park located, the Vista subdivision is south, excuse me, north of 4,700 South and west of 5,600 West. That newer subdivision out there towards ATK property site there. So we have a proposal to approve the purchase of this pavilion and trellis. To the council for comment or action.
Mayor, move for approval of the purchase of the trellis at the Resolution 14-132.
We have a motion to approve that before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Lang has the second on that. The motion is properly before us to approve this contract. Any discussion? Councilman Rushton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that, you know, I guess it's somewhat fortuitous for us tonight that we had Mr. Murkey, I believe, come to talk to us about bringing in a new park addition to the city, which is really the beginning stages. This is kind of the end stages of actually putting in a type of park and amenity structure, one in which former council member Carolyn Burt talked about for years and years and years to try to, you know, replace the old Glen Weaver Park with this, that was located on the eastern side of the city, with this newer Glen Weaver Park on the western part of the city. And I think she would be pleased with the way the park is progressing as well as this trellis addition, which, as mentioned earlier by the city managers, paid for at a development park impact fees. And so nice to see how this moves along and just also a good exercise to see how these projects and ideas go from start all the way through to conclusion and finish.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. This is Resolution 14-132 to purchase a park pavilion and trellis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Resolution 14-132 is approved. Now that concludes the regular work of our session tonight. We were discussing some issues. We were having some updates on our fiber optic network or what might be referred to as the McQuarrie proposal and some of the things happening there. There wasn't much time really to answer all questions, and so because we will take no action, we will simply discuss it, we are going to take just a few minutes to have a little bit more discussion before we complete our work in our regular session tonight with the council's approval. Seeing no objection to that. Part of that lies with me. I attended some meetings and I think the public's aware that we have voted to continue studying this issue and are in the second phase or milestone of the McQuarrie proposal. Five cities have opted not to do that. There has been a lot of discussion, and I attended the UIA board meeting where some comments were made, which I think would be beneficial to bring you up to date on. Apart from their regular business that they had, and it was not part of their agenda, but the cities not participating in the McQuarrie study at this point want to study other options. And they had requested that information be disclosed, financial information that's not currently available to the public, in order for First Digital to refine their proposal in some way. There was a lot of discussion about that. That's a separate issue, and that will be on a future agenda there, I guess, to vote upon. The interesting part of that discussion was that those cities felt that the McQuarrie cities were not being, well, the term that they used, and because it's on a public record, I can repeat it here, that somehow our cities were trying to block them from studying this alternate proposal. And apparently, there are even some others out there who are making noise. They've not brought any formal proposal forward. And that was a fairly strong statement to say that our cities were trying to block that. They implied that that was driving some sort of a wedge between Utopia cities. There was some extended discussion on that. And the First Digital people had actually made a presentation and were requesting that the UIA board and subsequently the Utopia board actually take positions to allow that to proceed and that they should, could, visit with the cities, which was an interesting approach, which I had discussed with the First Digital people. And I said, you don't need permission from those boards to talk with the cities, and they don't need permission. They felt they wanted to do it that way, and that was fine. I know that West McDonald, who is kind of the spokesman for this proposal, has come and talked to me and given me a copy of their proposal, and I said that was fine. They may be contacting you. I have seen no reason why, you know, any of you have to, but you can speak with anyone that you deem appropriate. And I so shared that thought with the people in that meeting. The chair was kind enough to call on me, even though I'm not a member of their board. The other thing I indicated to them in this discussion that they want to take a vote with First Digital is that, and I felt, and I made the statement, and I believe I was correct, and I will tell you what I did. I said, I believe I speak for the council when I say that West Valley City, we will instruct our members of the board, meaning specifically Mr. Pyle and Mr. Isaac, that any proposal that would in any way negatively impact, impede, or do anything to slow down the McQuarrie proposal that the council has adopted by a majority vote, that we would instruct him that if it would in any way impact that, that he is to oppose it. And I felt fairly confident making that statement. This does not prevent them from studying it or from looking at it, but that it cannot interfere with positions that our council have already taken. That can only be done by our council, but I think that that's pretty well where we're at. We are moving forward with that proposal to study it more. And I also commented on the fact of this, they're claiming that somehow this is creating a wedge between the cities. And I made the statement that I felt that certainly comments that they had made that about our opposing somehow and blocking them could also be construed the same way, that they better, they should be careful about statements they make because we have to work together, those eleven cities. The McQuarrie proposal does not cover every issue, and specifically, the fact that five cities have decided not to further pursue the McQuarrie proposal, although those, some cities, a couple of them have made statements that they might still want to put it before their cities, their citizens for a vote, although they're not sure how they would do that and if they can, or they haven't taken official positions on it. And so there are concerns there, and we need to make sure we work with them regularly, and I am trying to do that. I met with 11 cities on Friday, and we had some of those discussions and discussed some of the issues that we would still have to deal with, whether the McQuarrie proposal is approved or not. And certainly, issues relating to parity, I put high emphasis on parity meaning. And if you'll note, I did send a document, one of the documents they had that highlight the lack of parity that we have specifically West Valley City, where we are less than 19% built out. Some of the cities are more than 90% built out. And how that would be addressed, there are proposals and discussions ongoing about dealing with that. First Digital, McQuarrie have struggled with that because they really can't make that decision, although it certainly impacts what they're doing. And so those discussions continue and will continue. One statement was made that we got to this non-parity position over a period of 10 years, and it may take 10 years to bring parity back. But my response to that is, it may take that long, but if you don't have a plan now, you'll never get there. And we need to have that plan clearly defined because currently, the cities are not agreeing on parity and how we deal with that. And there's not even agreement on many of those issues still facing Utopia. They expressed a great desire to get together and work on those and meet them, whether it's through the mayors or through the city councils, through the boards at Utopia and UIA, although there are some things that those boards cannot decide for, that we're going to have to deal with. So I just wanted to kind of give you a flavor for some of that discussion. I would say that I, as I have mentioned to you in the past, I vigorously defend councils to make decisions, and those decisions, I felt like I defended it there. I tend to understate what the emphasis I placed on it, but there's no need for that emphasis to be here because I believe you're in agreement with that the right of the city to determine their destiny remains with the city, just as those who opted not to go forward. I defend that right as well. They make their decisions. They'll have to live with those as we will live with ours. So that kind of gives you a flavor. I don't know if you have any questions. Mr. Pyle, you were in that meeting at UIA and Utopia. Any key item I left out or?
No, sir.
Okay. There were other routine items. That wasn't the whole meeting. You did have things of training, different things that were required. But I felt that particular discussion would be of interest to you. We will continue, or I will continue, to meet with the six, the other five cities that are moving forward on the proposal. We are working. We are working on language, as soon as we get that, we hope to share that. Although depending on what they want to do, there exists a very real possibility that we may not have the exact same language in all the cities. I think there's value in that, but I don't know that we'll get there if we have to include all the things that are wanted by every city. So with that, we continue to work on it. I will meet again, of course, with the 11 cities before I think that we need to start discussing with them and continue the discussion on how this works out, where they are not part of the Macquarie proposal, and the issues that we have to deal with there on parity and costs and revenues and everything else that have to be dealt with. And they can't be ignored. And in fact, I think we've kind of, they've kind of talked about them, but they aren't taking any action or actually trying to define that. And I think that's the next step we must take, is to start trying to define it. Or we will find that come November after the vote, or in December, or in January, or next year, we will be exactly the same place with those cities as we are right now. And we will have cities that don't want to pay their operational expenses, because we won't solve that in the next few months. But we need to have a plan. And so those discussions, I will start pushing forward fairly aggressively, and I will even meet with some of those mayors individually to find out what their concerns are and if those can be addressed and try and work through them. Because some of them feel very strongly about, some about the operational expenses, some about the allocation. But I also express the feeling that, from West Valley's point of view, I don't know, my personal opinion was, that I don't know that we have been dealt with very fairly either, because we have subsidized and we actually pay a very significant portion of the operational expenses and other cities when we have a very small proportion of the services, with such a small number of customers currently on the system. So those are the types and flavors of the discussions that I have been holding with them, and I felt it important to share with you, and certainly in a public meeting. So any comments or feedback? Or, you know, any questions you have? Okay. There are other issues that we'll need to deal with in the future. One of the things we do need to do, we will hold an executive session. That executive session will be held immediately following the, and we'll have a motion on that in a moment, following the two other meetings that we will hold, that we need to get some minutes approved, the Housing Authority, and always have to look to make sure I get the names right, and Redevelopment Agency, that's the other one. And that will be held here in these chambers, but will not be open to the public. It will be for two purposes. One, to discuss current litigation, pending litigation, and the disposal of real property. And so that completes our business for a regularly scheduled session. So now, I believe we will entertain a motion that includes adjournment of this session, the motion to go into executive session at a time immediately following the next two meetings. And I think that's everything. We've announced where it will be held and everything. Councilman Buehler?
I'll move that we adjourn this meeting and reconvene in an executive session to discuss pending and current and anticipated litigation and the disposition of real property following the conclusion of the Housing Authority meeting.
Thank you. That motion is before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously. This session is now adjourned.
I will call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency. Now, we've had an opening ceremony, and that all members of the agency are present. Item four on our agenda is the approval of the meeting we held on July 1, 2014.
Who would we approve the minutes?
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 1 regular meeting. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. Any communications or report from our chief executive officer tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. No other business? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Redevelopment Agency stands adjourned.
I call to order the meeting of the West Valley City Housing Authority. Now, we have had an opening ceremony, all members of this body are present. We have on our agenda also the minutes of the July 1, 2014 regular meeting for your consideration.
I'll move to approve the minutes of our July 1, 2014 meeting.
Second. We have a motion, the second. Any discussion of the motion? None, we'll call a vote. Those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
That has passed unanimously. Mr. Pyle, any communications or report tonight?
No, sir. Good, thank you.
And then we, the next item of business would be to adjourn. We'd entertain a motion for the same. Motion to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.